I'm calling the meeting to order. Thank you all again for attending, we certainly appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Trustee Burchi. Trustee Covington. Trustee Herren. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra. Vice President Hill. President Johnson.
Here. And there's no one attending electronically. Alrighty, we will have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the minutes of March 26?
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi. Trustee Covington. Trustee Herren. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra. Vice President Hill. President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, staff reports. Director?
Good evening, everybody, just a couple of quick shout outs. I want to thank our Parks and Environmental Interpretive Services teams who are part of our Prescribed Burn Unit. In the last week, we have been able to facilitate multiple prescribed burns, including one at Springdale Savannah, that are essential to the healthy growth of those natural areas. So, we've been able to, over the last couple of years, with the work of Christie Shoemaker and Jacob Cuban and Matt Freeman, expand those teams. And so, we actually were able to conduct burns on two different sides of the district in one day. So, a lot of great progress in that space of environmental sustainability. I also want to note that we had our kickoff meeting yesterday to begin the environmental assessment that we've been talking about with the outside consultant. So, we just had a welcome meeting and we talked through the request for information that they have asked us to provide in order to provide some foundation for them to start that assessment and give us recommendations for prioritization to reduce our carbon footprint and be more environmentally sustainable. So, we look forward to that process. They anticipate that we would be done in early fall with that. So, we look forward to updates throughout the process as we go. We are also, just a quick note that we are in the final, we have three more weeks of Glow Wild at Peoria Zoo. We are also in the last week of soliciting professionals who would be a part of our Be Anything effort at the Peoria Playhouse Children's Museum. So, we hope people will take advantage of being a part of that great experience to help expose kids to different careers. And it's also a great fundraiser to support the playhouse. So, those are the highlights. There's so much going on, but those are the things that come top of mind tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions of the director? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Design, Construction and Planning.
Hi, everyone. The Planning, Design, Construction Division Monthly Project Report is in front of you. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions for you.
Any questions? Thank you. Chief of Police, report.
The monthly report for the month of March is before you for your review. If you had any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. If I don't have the answers, I'll follow up the officers involved and get that information for you.
Anybody have questions of the police?
I have one.
Yes.
Yes, that was. There are. There are no current cameras. We do have recreational security active in the area. They aren't stationed there all the time, but we don't. Yeah, it was, I mean, just because it says mob doesn't mean it's like 20 people. But, yeah, there were several people involved in the incident. And there was an underage teen involved.
I just wondered if we had, you know, there's so many kids that. When it gets really crowded, do the police hang out near there?
Yes, in the summertime, we have a recreational security officer stationed specifically in the park and is able to deter a lot of that type of activity as they see things start to heat up. You know, they can't be everywhere at once in the park, but certainly it does help deter a lot of that activity.
Yeah, I would think that they kind of have a
Correct, yeah, good pulse on the situation.
There's a fence around.
Yes, correct. Yeah, anybody can pass through. It is an age-specific playground to a degree, but being fully accessible, the whole idea was that adults and people of all ages could use it. So, yeah, anybody of any age can be in there. My understanding is it was within the fenced area.
When did this occur? Okay. You know, the questions of Mr. Freeman?
I had one about, well, it looks like there was found ammunition on the trail in Robinson Park. But then, looks like there was a firearm buried? Or someone reported that a firearm was buried? Can you go into detail about if that was, it just says that it was canvassed and secured where it was found? What type of firearm?
The way it was explained to me, it was called in and reported that there may be a gun buried there. They did canvass the area and secured it. There was no gun found.
Okay, and then the ammunition, do you know what type of ammunition it was?
It was, I believe the explanation was some sort of like military style, like a large ammunition, whether it was a collector's item or whatever.
Okay, but, okay.
The two events were unrelated.
Yeah, yeah. They called it a shell.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not on the report, but where are we at with hiring?
We are in the process of, we're preparing to begin interviews. So, we hope to have someone onboard here as soon as we can. We're also not going to speed the process up. We want to make sure it's the right person and the right fit. We appreciate the work of our officers who are carrying that load together. We're also bringing in some assistance from an outside consultant who will help us with some onboarding and technical assistance as we begin that transition for the chief.
We're just, we're still accepting application and doing the interview process.
We are about to start interviews. So, there is a process that happens before interviews, but we are about to start interviews. They start next week.
Are we still accepting applications?
The posting is still open.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Alrighty, committee reports. District Strategy and Hot Committee. Does he make a ride-burke, remote request approval? Do we need a motion? Wait, wait, do I want to talk about it first? I'm sorry. I thought we did this.
You did this in the meeting?
Yeah, we did.
Earlier tonight, yep.
Yeah, 7:00 a.m.
I move to approve F and A.
Any questions? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi. Trustee Covington. Trustee Herren. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra. Vice President Hill. President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. New business, policy updates related to the 2025 changes in state law.
Yes, yes, sir. You have before you our policies that were presented to you at the previous board meeting. These policies are in compliance with the Employment Law changes that occurred on January 1st of 2025. As you can see in the memo, you'll see what policies there are before you for recommendation. This is now before you for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi. Trustee Covington. Trustee Herren. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra. Vice President Hill. President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries. 8B, travel expenses were for President Johnson to attend the annual IAPD legislative reception April 29th and conference on the 30th in Springfield. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Question? Roll call?
Trustee Burchi. Trustee Covington. Trustee Herren. Trustee Montez. Trustee Sierra. Vice President Hill. President Johnson.
Aye. Did any, did everyone get a memo on that legislative conference in Springfield? All the board members? Okay. Okay, we had the first read on the naming policy. We're gonna be.
Right, our strategy committee meeting a short while ago, we voted to advance this for a first read at this present moment before the board and it'll come up for a second reading in our next meeting on April 23rd.
I'll move. Oh, no, we don't need to do anything with that.
Okay. This license agreement at Robinson Park.
We just deferred.
Yeah, yeah, we just deferred that. Did anyone here want to speak on that, by any chance, about the Robinson Park situation?
Did you say we deferred?
Yeah.
The committee.
Yeah, we defer that for a minute here on number 8B, the license agreement.
Is it time sensitive?
I believe the owners are waiting on us before they begin any work on their home.
Okay. Did they want to speak? We have a place where we have citizens' requests to address the board. Does the board favor allowing that to be moved up now? In favor? Citizens' request to address the board. You'd like to come up and address the board, sir? State your name.
My name's Patrick Alwyn. Here, basically, I bought a house. Tried to get it surveyed prior to the purchase because we like it. You keep it up well, of course, especially.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Did you get my name, ma'am, or no?
Yes, I did.
Okay, very good. Purchased this house, wanted to purchase this house. Wasn't going to survey it prior because we were going to move the septic to the other side of the house. So, the guy's like, well, can we get in there and survey? See if we can even do that? So, because if we wouldn't have been able to do it, I would not have purchased the house. But we were able to do it regardless. She, we had some budge against it. The current owner said, you can't do that. You're trying to get me down in price. So, I just said, okay, we still love it. We're going to buy it regardless and then hash it out. Because I knew there was some little things wrong with the property line, you know? I could just totally tell. So, they kind of encroached onto your guys' property and kind of extended my backyard. It kind of looks like it all belongs to me. But when we did the survey, it was built upon you, on your guys', a little bit. Nothing, nothing huge, but I just wanted to be transparent right off the get because I didn't want the people, if I ever go to sell the house or something, there's a big, hey, you know, there's a problem here and it's not taken care of. So, whether you give it to me or you don't, a lease, buy, whatever, I just need to move forward to finish my house, that's it.
Oh, I see. Okay, you said you knew that the.
I didn't know it. I just like. Well, we bought it anyways. Being, maybe we can just, you know, I'm talking to my contractor guy. It's a solvable situation, even if you've encroached or just bring it up to whoever's property it is and kind of hash it out. And it just so happened to be you guys.
I see, well, you know, I'm one board member. I'm not in the habit of selling partnership land.
Oh, I get it, I get it. Oh, absolutely, I'm not trying to buy, you know, I just want know what direction I need to go, whether you're not and I can adjust it and get off your stuff or off your property or lease it to me and, or whatever, you know? I just wanted to be, you know, just want to take care of the situation, basically.
Well, I appreciate you coming to.
First one I've ever been to. That's the first one I've ever been to. I didn't know you guys were down here. I've seen you on TV, pia in there, but you know.
Oh, wait a minute, now you're doing good for a while here. Don't come to partnership.
I only recognized you.
Okay, alright. You don't come to our zoos and visit our partnership?
My wife says I belong in one sometimes, but no, I'm kidding. You know what, we do some catering with our business and we do the state tournament down there and the Notre Dame has one down at Detweiler. And, yeah, I did take the kids at the zoo quite a bit when they were younger. They're a little bit older now. Yeah, we did go multiple times.
Okay. Well, sir, I appreciate you coming. We were going to, there was a discussion on the license agreement. Zach, you want to bring that back again? The license agreement. I mean, just, just speak on that.
Sure. Okay, so the property at 11305 North Ponty Road has long had an encroachment. Recently, the property was sold. As you know, Mr. Alwyn is here. They approached the park district, originally wanting to buy or lease the land. Our typical response in these situations is to offer a license agreement. And so, staff is proposing to issue a license agreement for a small triangular part of parkland as well as a strip adjacent to their pool to allow the fence to remain. And staff is recommending execution of this agreement.
How long does this agreement?
License agreements go forth as long as the people named in it own the house.
Okay, alright. Okay, let's go ahead and move on. Is there, is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Question?
So, let's say in the event if I did sell it, what's, what goes there? I mean, the next owner have to jump through any hoops to do the same thing we're doing now? Is that kind of how it is?
Yeah, we would have to do a license agreement with the new owners.
Okay, very good, just so I can tell the people what they're getting into if I do.
Or you'd have to remove those, you would remove those things that are on park district property at the sale.
Okay, very good.
That would be our preference.
Yes.
Okay, understood.
The items be removed now. At the sale. Right, I mean, that's what, yes.
Well, but you're buying the property. Of course. Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to live in it, yeah, forever. Yeah, I'm in a rental right now, I'd rather. Definitely being, it's just being, we're redoing it all, so.
President Johnson, may I make a comment? Yeah, so President Johnson is right. We did talk about this in committee before. And so, I just want to be transparent in that there was some fair concerns raised with this as well, without getting too much into the weeds of it. I think one valid concern that was brought up is that, like President Johnson has talked about, the park district is not in the business of selling our land. We are a natural steward in which we aim to protect and preserve as much as possible. We also realize. We also realize, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, I also realize that this is a bit of a conundrum for you, you know, as the new buyer, for the property. So, what I just want to say is that, while I do, I do support this, because this does align with our prior practice to be good partners to constituents throughout the district, there are some concerns that I hope that we do take up at a later time, that way we can address what our standard practice is moving forward, if this is going to be something that arises in conversation in the future. So, I just wanted to be in complete disclosure for the record, this is something that it sounds like is going to pass, I don't know, of course, we also have to vote on it, but it is something that, it really opened up something new for us in perspective, and I hope that as a board, we can have a conversation about that in a later day.
Oh, we will.
You know, you have approached the board to resolve it, we didn't have to come to you.
Sure.
You're looking to take care of this.
Yes, absolutely, and I don't want to make a big stick about it at all, it's, I just need to know where to go to, to make this happen on my end, for, to get my project going.
You know, any negative comments we've made have nothing to do with you or your house, it's just, you know, we represent the taxpayers, right? And it's their land, it's not our land.
No.
Yeah.
You guys are pretty nice folks, I.
I just have one question, just to clarify, what improvements would occur on the land?
Basically, I'm just gonna add a new deck, because I was in despair.
Okay.
And pretty much when you take a step off the deck, I'm in your property, so, I mean, it's a tough call to make, you know what I mean? So, we had to get that out.
You mentioned some sort of digging.
Yeah, they had to remove a septic tank from that side, to put in a brand-new one, they got to remove the whole thing, and.
Okay, but the septic tank's not going on our property.
I'm sorry.
The septic tank is not going to be on our property.
No, it never was.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay. And will we have, will the new deck, it'll fall within the parameters of?
Yeah, we're not going much bigger than.
Thank you.
Trustee Herren does make a great, good point. Any of the enhancements that you're looking to do to your home, and those of which fall on Park District land, are those, are any of those permanent, in that it would be a heavy lift for us to remove it later on down the line?
It won't be built onto your, I don't, I just, the way it's set up, it's, I don't think you'll have an issue, no, it's just a fence or something you'll have to remove.
But what about the gazebo?
Gazebo's gone.
What?
Took it down, it was, it was unstable, and it was dangerous, so.
Yeah, it does.
But there is a square pad there, right at the, where the property line cut right through the gazebo. There's still like a poured concrete pad there, with brick, or with those pavers on top of that. So, that thing is there, I mean, I didn't put that.
So, does the license footprint include where the gazebo was?
Yes, it did. The license, though, is specifically to allow what is existing to remain. Anything new would not be allowed.
If it's no longer existing, why are we giving away more land in the license agreement, if it doesn't need to be?
Well, the, there is further encroachment that goes out farther, like the turf area, that's mowed, goes out much farther than the gazebo did. The gazebo is only over the line five or six feet, and the triangle encompasses the path, I'm presuming irrigation lines, and the turf grass.
And you're keeping those?
I, pretty much, yeah. So, that's okay.
So, we would say the gazebo can't be replaced, or no other structure built on the pad, right?
Yeah, now that it's down, it would not be covered in this license agreement.
Nothing could be rebuilt, though?
No, not without coming to us.
No, I mean, I'm just gonna make the fence, because I have to have the pool closed off from it, so, that's, that would be the only thing I'd be putting over there.
One thing you.
Maybe a jacuzzi, and that little pad, it's removable, you know, I won't be. I, just like yours, boss.
Patrick, you're, I'm glad you came.
I'm glad, glad to be here, it's, it's been fun, it's interesting, I've never been grilled by a panel, I usually am the boss, I can just say, that's what it is, you know?
All right, all right, I got you. Any other questions for Mr. Alwyn, board? Number of questions? Okay, we have a first, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Burci.
I need to abstain on this one.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Herren.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, got it?
Got it?
Good, all right, very good, I'm learning, I'm learning, maybe I need just ten more, ten more Park District meetings.
Thanks for coming to the meeting.
Hey, I loved it, it was neat. Thanks, guys, appreciate your cooperation, if you guys need anything from me as a business, I'll take care of you, all right? Very good. Rob, we own a meat shop?
I figured.
Yeah, our former memorial, we're on the border, I know, we're in the heights, the roads are.
That's still in the Park District, you're good.
Right, 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 yeah, give me a call. Very good, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The lease renewal agreement, the African American Hall of Fame Museum, need a motion?
Second.
Question, anybody want to discuss it or anything, anything we need to say?
You have a quick question, and for some reason, Mr. President, I cannot get my extended agenda materials to pull up tonight, so I only do this just from memory. In the materials, it said something about there was going to be a continued build-out, and we were going to have a discussion with them about that. And, I mean, is there an issue that exists here, and could you get into that for?
Yeah, so, one of the requirements or agreements that was a part of the original lease was for them to use, the area was the former book nook in the lobby, to be an exhibit to show their artifacts that they have as Hall of Fame. That has only been partially successful, so, in talking with President Johnson, one of our requirements for the renewal of this lease was progress made on the finishing of that effort. So, during the last couple of weeks, as we've been talking about this lease agreement renewal, we have been working to make sure that they are connected with staff at the Riverfront Museum, who originally committed their support to help, and we just, you know how that goes, right? So, we are really pushing that and monitoring that to make sure that that happens, because that certainly reflects on, not only the Hall of Fame, but also on the Park District, when that is a partially finished exhibit.
Are we going to be the permanent home, or is the PRM going to be the permanent home then?
We are their, we are their home, as long as, as we want them, and they want to be here, so they were, this Hall of Fame was at Proctor Recreation Center, we by agreement moved their inventory to here, and our goal is to raise their profile by having that in the lobby with all the folks who come through, so we want that to be a good first impression. So, our effort is to support that collaboration with the Riverfront Museum, and potentially to help to support whatever needs to happen to make that the quality that it needs to be.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Is there, is there a possibility on that voluntary in Park District, but is there a possibility that they could use help from our staff, who know a little bit about putting exhibits together?
Not the kind of exhibits that they have, it is more history museum, and so, we have connected them with the leadership at the Riverfront Museum, and they have had a consultancy, and so they're waiting on those recommendations and process. There may be a role for us as we try to build that out, but the layout and the signage that goes with that is really more historical museum than it is any, any facility expertise that we may have as a Park District.
What are their hours?
They're open when we're open. So, the back classroom that they use for their storage and their meeting space is only open when their leadership or membership are here, but the exhibits are open for people to see anytime you come in the lobby.
So, it's just the stuff that's in the lobby, basically, and if you, if they're not, if you're not here, when the staff is there, then you can't see, because that was the problem down at Proctor.
It absolutely was, which is why we talked to them, and Trustee Herren was instrumental in that collaboration, to move them here, which was really, really positive for us, that the Proctor space is now a classroom that's magical. But one of the, the goals of moving them here was to raise that profile for them to be able to truly exhibit the wonderful artifacts that they have, and we're still, it's not there yet, and so, we're trying to help them to make those connections, and we have been successful with that over the last couple of weeks, and so, we hope to see progress soon. I wrote that the way I did, and it clearly has caused some questions, because I wanted to honor the fact that it is not where we want it to be, but that we are in process to get it there.
But because they're only in the commons area upstairs.
And the classroom.
It's hard to keep track of what the attendance or the number of people, so we probably don't have an idea of how many people actually visit the exhibit.
No, no, I don't, no, we don't.
You know, they, they have signs up a lot, don't touch, don't, do you think there's some concerns about them having their artifacts out there, and nobody, none of their people watching it, or able to?
No, it's very, we've been very clear, and they are, what they need is better, like, casing, thank you, that's the word that I was going to struggle with, so thank you for, with that. And that's, I know that's one of the initial recommendations from the Riverfront Museum, is to have better protection, but certainly, there's not, there's not a lot out there yet, and so, if there's a way for us to support better casing, or shelving, or whatever it takes to display what they have, that's, that's what we're waiting on, is that recommendation, and then we'll figure out together how to get there.
That might be the problem with them not putting all their stuff out.
It's also been a year, so there needs to have been more conversation around that point, but yes.
I, I do appreciate, Emily, you're saying that you, you're sort of helping to facilitate with the Riverfront Museum, because I had a conversation with Rosemary, you know, very short, but that seemed to be the stumbling block, they couldn't get that movement to get, to get assistance, and how to, how to, how and what to display, and, you know, and all that, that process that you want to develop, you know, to be able to keep it safe, so, I think, you know, so it's really great that you're helping them do that.
Are they in a financial position to move forward?
Until we know what the proposal is, or the recommendation is, I think there are opportunities potentially for our staff to help with that, or for, I can't answer that until I know what the recommendations are from the Riverfront Museum. I know that just initially, Alicia shared with me that Rosemary shared with her, right, so I've hearsaid, and objection, all those things, but that that middle section with the shelves that lean, that that, their recommendation is that that come out, and it's a more upright, you know, really eye-catching exhibit. So, those are things that we're waiting on some schematics, so that, I mean, we have very, very talented people at the Park District, you are right, and there are people who can play a role, it's just trying to make sure that that larger philosophy is clear from a historic museum perspective.
And they're running short, I mean, there's funds available, probably through the Community Foundation, and their arts.
Correct, until we have a budget.
For the community.
Right, there may be dollars that the Park District wants to invest, because it's our space and our, our reputation, so, but again, it takes that recommendation and those dollars, and then we'll, we'll try to work together to find a funding source for that. Thank you, great questions.
And the curator, curator from Lakeview is working with them, too, correct?
Yes, the curator of, yes, exhibits.
Emily, thank you for your, your help in all of this, and.
You're welcome.
Getting it moved, certainly do appreciate it, and also, Trustee Herren, for your, your help. Okay. Do we need to approve it?
Yes, please.
Is there a motion?
We have a motion and a second, sir.
Roll call.
Trustee Burci.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Herren.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some calendar consent items, is anyone, any particular one anybody want to bring by or talk about, or?
Nine A.
Nine A?
And, Mr. President, on, again, I'm going to do this off of memory, I've got questions about nine B through E, but I, my questions are generalized to them, so, I guess I'm asking to take those all off in a group.
So, A, D, as in David, E as in Edward, we're taking those off? So, B as in boy, C as in cat, F and G, need a motion?
I'm sorry, F and G are the only ones remaining on the agenda, correct?
You said B as in boy.
No, I said B.
B, Burci.
I said.
No, he said D and E, correct?
I said B, C, D, and E.
He did say B through E, so.
And then I asked for nine.
Oh, you said D through?
Yeah, boy, nine B as in boy, through nine E as in Edward.
So, F and G are all you can approve without conversation?
Okay, all right.
President Johnson, I move to approve nine F for Peoria Players, and nine G for the Owens Cylinder Rental Quote.
Second.
Question? Roll call.
Trustee Burci.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Herren.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, nine A.
So, nine A, my questions are, you know, I noticed that there's, it's really quite a list of people who have, that the request for bids were sent out, are there any, were there any local that were considered at all? Because it seems like going to, was it Michigan? Seems quite a hall, when, you know, it seems like we're surrounded by a bevy of.
We are, by park code, we have to advertise in the local paper, I'm sorry, can you not hear me? There you go, by park code, we have to advertise in the local paper, which is how a lot of these companies will also find out about the bids, and then will download them. I did check with them, they understand what the requirements are, and the shipping, I did check numerous references for companies that they only ship their products to, everything came back great.
Okay, did any, I mean, did any local ones?
Yes, yeah, Lost Art is local, and, let me find my list here. Yeah, Lost Art and Owens Design Group are both local.
I just have a question that is really basic, but, so, I noticed when I read it, they're not a minority, they're not women-owned, they're not, they have no, so, we just, we fill all that out, but it doesn't matter, we just go with the lowest all the time?
Four projects that are bid, yes, it is by the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
I appreciate Trustee Covington raising that point, because opportunities precisely like this is why we have been pushing so hard in DEIA, not only to try to incentivize and spur minority business, but also to be very intentional on our outreach. I am of the opinion of Trustee Montez, too, that this, I think, it's hard for me to just accept that we couldn't go with someone local, it's even more difficult for me to accept that we couldn't find a minority business to potentially push this through to, and when I say push it to, with respect to the law, right, I understand state law is low and responsible, so, of course, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but I don't know if there's opportunity for us to have conversation about how can we further bring minority business to contracts like this, where we know we have more compet, or competition, when it comes to these sorts of industries. I don't have the answer to that, and the answer may be, there is no answer because of state law, but it's just a little bit dis. of state law, but it's just a little bit disappointing, not for the staff, I understand you all did, and you complied with what you, with the parameters and with the law, just really wish we could have got someone local and a minority business.
I can tell you, it's disappointing for us, too. The reason the list is so long on all the companies that I did notify is that I also will check with Tammy Johnson, who goes through the state's website, and anybody who is registered as wanting to bid on any project like these, I send the notification to, in hopes that they'll bid.
And that's why my comment, again, it's not to you all at all, right, I think one thing that came up in a lot of recent community conversations is, when the minority business doesn't exist, how do we attract, right, so you all are casting that net, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're trying.
Move to approve nine A.
I'll second.
Question, I have one. Now, there was a case where, some years ago, we had a situation where we wanted to do Proctor Center's roof, and it wasn't exactly the lowest bidder that got it, we gave it to some individuals that were minorities. Now, is there a law that we have to take this lowest bidder on these positions now, or as a park district? Is that, I mean, that's etched in stone, I mean, we can't, we can't make that decision so that minorities, particularly blacks, can do business with the park district, because at this rate, they will never be able to do business with the park district, if we have to go with a state law, when I know we did this before, some years ago. So, is that, is this something that we have to do by law?
I'm going to let attorney Day speak.
Her representation regarding our state obligation to accept the lowest responsible bidder is accurate. I'm not, I'm unfamiliar with the circumstances you're discussing, and if you'd like me to look into that, I'm happy to do.
Yes, I do. Also, I want to be, I want, I want a risk management company, lawyers that we have there.
Dermah.
Dermah, Pderma, I want them contacted on this, because something's amiss, because if we keep going at this rate, minorities will never be able to get in and do work with the park district. I mean, that's just, that's not fair. And I want, yeah, I want to, I want to pursue this, I want the, if it pleases the board to look at this situation, because if we continue down this road, when I know, and I've been here 30 years on this board, and I know what we've done before, so I need to have some clarification.
That is really, I appreciate, and we will support that, it is not a Pderma specific.
Well, I'm just saying, that was a lawyer that was involved the first time.
We'll have attorney Day.
Day, I'm not, I'm not trying to go over you, no, and that's, that's not my intention, you guys do a great job, but I want...
It is hard to know which attorney does which thing for us, we do, we've talked about that today a couple of times, but this is definitely attorney Day and attorney Gunn, they've just added to their to-do list.
But at this rate, minorities will never be able to do work with the park district under these, under these circumstances, under these rules, and that's not right. So, I need to get some clarification, and if there need to be some changes, then we need to contact our legislators in Springfield and get this changed, because this is not fair. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, nine B, we talked about yet?
Well, it's nine B through...
We voted, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you did your nine A.
You need to vote on that, Dave.
Right, we need to vote?
We need to vote now, yeah.
May I ask a clarification with you, Mr. Johnson? Are, are you saying that we should hold on this item of business until we get an answer?
You know what, yeah, let's do that.
I just wanted to clarify.
Unless they need to have, we always run into this question all the time, because the staff has to have the work done, or something needs to be done right away, and we don't look at all of those situations.
I believe that we don't have a vendor at this point, unless we use, we need this approved, is that correct? That's correct.
A vendor for our T-shirts?
Yes, our contract is up at the end of this month.
Okay.
And President Johnson, to follow up, the reason why I wanted to clarify what the intent was, was because it is, it is a state law that is really tying our hands right now, so I don't think that we will get any resolution to our concern right now.
That quick.
But I do, I do agree with you that when it comes to state procurement policy, this is one of the situations that definitely raises concerns, because to Mr. Johnson's point, minority businesses cannot always afford the lowest bid, so it's definitely fair.
This is very similar to the conversation that we had in the contractor purview as part of the DEIA committee, where we talked about that lowest responsible bidder standard, and trying to operate outside of that is very dangerous, that is the state law, and we have to adhere to that, and there is not a disqualifier that exists in this instance that allows us to do that, and we are bound by that lowest bidder.
You know, I hear that argument all the time, for the past 30 years, I hear that argument, and we still in the same position where minorities cannot get businesses with the park districts or with municipalities. It's about time, a change has got to happen.
And that's a change that needs to happen at the state level, we need to have that legislative advocacy to change that in recognition of these opportunities. If we do that as a, as a park district on our own, we create a great deal of risk for the district.
Look, I get it, I mean, I, I've heard that argument. Do they have any blacks or minorities working for them?
I...
She brought that up, our board member brought that up. Are there any minorities working for this particular company?
I don't have that information, since we were buying product only.
Okay, all right. See, there's, I have a lot of questions, I mean, I want to know what they, who they are, what they, I mean, do they have, don't they, aren't they supposed to answer those type of questions when they do business with us?
Not for this kind of a product.
Not for this time.
Correct. When we're purchasing product, we do not ask those questions per policy.
Okay.
Just ownership, correct?
Roll call.
Trustee Burci.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Aye.
Trustee Sierra.
Aye.
Vice President Hill.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, nine B as in boy?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd really like to take nine B and through E in, in, together, because I have two questions about them, and you'll be, maybe not surprised to know we're right back into the discussion we were in two minutes ago. So, when I look at nine B, for example, and thank you, Alex, for giving me your computer here, the, it talks about bids being selected for this particular project, and then it gives a bunch of information about this, one company bid, then it talks about the cert, it gives us the certification, and then it says, gives the certificate of equal employment opportunity compliance for contractors' vendors. And there's a paragraph on there that we added while I was on the board, which says that this contractor is committing, that it will examine all job classifications to determine if minority persons or women are underutilized, and will take appropriate affirmative action to rectify under, under, any underutilization, and gives the Illinois Administrative Code provision, which is, administrative code, it's not a statute, but it has the force of law, because it's established under the law, these people have an obligation to do it. Then they give us, in this particular instance, their workplace profile, which shows that they have, of a total of 1,000 employees, 700 of them are white male, 70 of which are black employees, black male. Now, you'd think that this company would have room to consider this particular paragraph and how it applies, and I, I don't know this company at all, so maybe they're doing that, I'm not commenting on that. But to get to the point you raised earlier, one, it's a lowest responsible bid, as I understand the law, and again, I'm going to make my usual thing, I'm a lawyer, but I'm not making any legal opinions here, and I've not researched this issue, but it seems to me to be the lowest responsible bidder, they have to be following the law of Illinois. So, that means that they should be doing this analysis under the Illinois Administrative Code. And again, as I've said before, I implore this board and the staff to make sure that our contractors demonstrate that they are doing this. Now, I understand that what we were told, and this made sense to me by staff, was that we are creating baselines for these companies, and the next time we contract with them, we'll see if they've actually done something. And I think we can ask of them, and I think the law says that we have the right to ask of them, show us your plan, show us what you've been doing. All right, now, that's, that's the company in nine B. Now, we've got maybe a baseline there at that sheet that they gave us, but you're on a nine C, whoops, admittedly, okay, Alex, I screwed this up, nine C, this company is not providing services, like service and training, but it is giving us some trucks, but apparently, this isn't pursuant to a state contract, and they, what they do is provide...
Where are you at?
I want to go.
Where are you at?
Thank you. All right, so this company, and they, we had two bidders here, and the winning bidder gave us the same documents as the last one, but they didn't give us the breakdown of their workforce. And I understand when we're buying a product is different than when we're buying a service, and I think that's the point Emily made earlier, and I really understand that. But unless we get from these people workforce profile, we have no way of knowing a baseline, and whether the next time we're dealing with them, to see if they're following the law, and therefore could be a lowest responsible bidder, we don't, I guess what I'm saying is, we need that information to be able to see if they're following this particular statute, so we need that. And by the way, they pull through on C, D, and E, too, I think, or D and E, even though one or both of those is under, is under a state contract. So, this is a long way of making a statement that I'm delighted we're now making them sign off that they're going to follow the law. Again, I want to make clear, I have no reason to think that they are or are not following the law, I simply don't know, they could be, they could be, so I'm not making any accusations of any type. I'm just saying, in the future, as we look at the very question you just raised a moment ago about lowest responsible bidder, I think we need to make sure that they are following provisions in the law like this, which are important to us.
You know, Tim, I'm looking at a page from that company, is Martin Mamy, or...
That's the first company.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's one that has all the information.
Right. And the others don't, and I think it's because we're buying products from them, not service and training.
Correct.
But I think we need that information from these other companies. So, that's my first comment slash question. My, and my next, my second question is, why is it that two of these products were, or two of these contracts were providing vehicles, there's a state contract and there's not one on the third? Is that just the way it is?
There's state contracts for the vehicles, nine C is just for upfitting two vehicles that we've already bought off of the state contract. So, those trucks are going to be taken to the, the upfitter and have dump bodies put on them, and then all our salt spreaders put on them.
That's the outfit for the two, two, okay, I understand that, all right, all right. So, Mr. President, having said that, and just encouraging our board to follow up on the issues that I mentioned before, and in the belief that the companies that identify as the winning bidders in items nine B, nine C, nine D, and nine E are all following the law and are exemplary, and contractors that we were on the association with will have the lead, and saying nothing to the contrary, I will move approval of nine B through E.
Second.
Question?
I do have a comment, I appreciate, I, I mean, it is like music to the ears, I am loving the conversation right now. My question really to the, to Emily and the team is, how are we monitoring all of this? After we set that baseline, we say, okay, this is what your profiles are now, specific to Tim's clarification, purchasing a service, how, how are you all as staff monitoring it for when the contract comes up in the future, and what is the trigger to bring that to the full board?
So, as part of a package that hasn't come up yet, because of the, the newness of that change, if we were to renew at an agreement with a, with a company that we have selected now, we would, we would compare those two, we would ask some questions, and we would bring that information to the board, when we come back to renew an agreement with that vendor.
And that's the reason why I ask, because I, I know that we haven't had that trigger yet.
Correct.
It's really to encourage us to, what you're already doing, have, have that forward thinking, and when you submit the future workforce profiles, it would then be accompanied with the prior ones submitted and their current one for evaluation.
Correct.
Yeah, I was just looking at that certification, or certificate of equal employment opportunity compliance, and it looks like on one, the first one says further that we will, it will examine all of job classifications to determine if minority persons or women are underutilized, and will take appropriate affirmative action to rectify any underutilization.
So, I mean, we have it in here, and he initialled it. Yeah, the question is just, are they really doing that? So, for year over year, or contract over contract, we would look at those numbers to see if there are improvements being made.
You know, please forgive me, but people that look like me, where they can't get a job, or they can't start a business, now, I'm getting ready, you know, we're moving on in this world, but we got, we, we got people coming behind us, that are young, black, need jobs, want to start businesses, and here we are, we talk about this stuff, but it's still here. We, we make mention of it, we talk about it today, nothing's ever get done, nobody's listening. And I'm tired of not listening, nobody's just not listening. Sometimes you have to do something to make stuff happen, and, I mean, you got a little girl coming up, what is her future going to be like? What they going to be, what kind of job she going to have? You know, this, this is, this is ridiculous, that we have to put up with this, and, and I'm sitting here 30 years, going on 32 years, and I'm still at the same place we was. That's not fair, and something needs to change, really, something really needs to change. I don't know what, but I'm not going to be done with this, this got, this, this, this process is not fair.
I think our process is compliant, I think with a place where this needs to go is when we go to Springfield on April 29th and 30th, have conversations, that's where change has to take place.
Yes, I mean, we got people out here picking us now, the union, is that correct? Why are they doing that?
Because we hired a non-union contractor.
And we did that because they had minorities, correct, or not?
They have minorities, I, that's not, they were the lowest bidder.
Well, we had an instance, well, I'll say it, we had instances in Gleno Park, because my name got put plastered all out there at Gleno Park, because they said I was anti-union, it's not that I'm anti-union, but because we hired some trucks that were black-owned to take the, the Depris away from here, they got that, they got that contract, otherwise we, they wouldn't have got it, we had to force it, so they threw my name all up, which I don't, you know, I don't care, but, Tim, I'm not anti-union, but the union's got to be fair to everybody also as well, and we keep putting up with this stuff, then I'm not doing, we're not doing the city of Peoria or, or people coming behind us a true justice. And this money that we get here, this 42 or 43 million dollars, that come through this park district, and all these salaries that we paying everybody, does not come from us. I don't know why, it does not come from us, it come from taxpayers, and we are all taxpayers, I don't know why people of color cannot benefit as well, and I'm just getting tired of it, I'm just, I'm tired of it. But it's nothing due to you, but I just wanted to be known, I know they can hear about this on Facebook, or whoever out here in the, in this media, they know how Robert Johnson feel. And I'm just, this is just ridiculous, yes.
I just have one question, Kevin, is there anything prohibiting us from collecting workforce profiles from companies when we're purchasing a product?
I would need to look into that very specifically to give you a definitive answer.
Okay, could you look into that, and I think that's an appropriate conversation for DEIA, being that this is where this came out of in the first place.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on, we need a motion to, get the motion, can we get a roll call?
Trustee Burci.
Aye.
Trustee Covington.
Aye.
Trustee Heron.
Aye.
Trustee Montez.
Trustee Sierra?
Aye.
Vice President Hill?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we have any pending business?